Hey, I'm curious about.
See you. Good luck in county.
I had something that.
Good evening, Anna.
Hi, good evening. Can you hear me all right?
You sound great.
Great, thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor.
Hi Cindy, can you hear me?
You sound great.
Thank you. Okay, we're at 5:59. We're seeing folks coming on here. Cindy, when we're ready, are you ready to go?
I will, I sure am.
Okay, and I'm, we're just waiting for Councilmember Hall, just turning six. We'll just give it a moment here. And.
So Councilmember Hall and Doring are, are on, just not their video. Let's wait for city manager to log on.
Okay. We had a closed session that went a little tight to this meeting, so I think it's taking just a little turnaround time here. Okay, I'm seeing our city manager, Mr. Press switch on. So I think right now, I'm just saying, not saying Councilmember Hardy, I'm assuming he'll be on very soon. So I think we'll just get rolling. We've got some preliminary messaging to do, so we'll just begin. I'm gonna call, Cindy, if you're ready, I will call to order the City of St. Helena Rego City Council meeting Tuesday, October 26, 2021. I'll make the mention, as we are all getting used to, that we have the estimated start times on the agenda, but they are approximate and intended as estimates only, and maybe shorter or longer as needed. With that, I'll pass it to Cindy to help us get information out about remote access and Spanish language interpretation.
There we go. So to participate in public comment, you can use your phone and dial 669-900-6833. At the prompt, you're going to enter the meeting ID, which is 893-702-7188, and you would press pound. And during public comment, you would raise your hand and then star nine to speak and called upon. Tonight's meeting also will have live Spanish interpretation. To access the interpretation, you will need to use the Zoom application from either your cell phone, tablet, or computer. Instructions on how to use the Zoom app are listed in English and Spanish on the agenda posted on the city's website. Once you join the meeting from the Zoom application, you will see a small globe at the bottom or top of the screen. Click on the globe, and you will be able to access the live interpretation.
Thank you very much. We'll move now to our pledge of allegiance. If folks would mute your microphones, place your hands on your heart and follow with me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We'll move now to our roll call.
Mayor Elfrid.
Here.
Vice Mayor Doring.
Here.
Councilmember Chateau.
Here.
Paul.
Here.
Hardy.
Here.
And we'll move to our adoption of the agenda. This is, I'll look to the city clerk to see if there are changes on tonight's agenda.
There are no changes.
So with that, I'll look to, for a motion to adopt the agenda.
So move.
Second.
Second.
Councilmember Chateau.
Yes.
Hardy.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Doring.
Yes.
Mayor Elfrid.
Yes. We'll move now to our public forum, where members of the public are entitled to speak on matters of municipal concern not on the agenda. Each person's comments shall be limited to four minutes, and each person is entitled to speak on any non-agendized item only once at any meeting. Brief questions by council members for clarifications may be posed and answered, and council members may make requests that items be placed on future agendas, but in accordance with state law, no substantive discussion or action may take place unless and until the matter properly appears on the agenda. I'll look to our city clerk and see if there is any public comment at this point.
There is no public comment.
Very good. We'll move past public comment. We'll move to our reports by staff and city council, future agenda items, and AB 1234 reports. I'll first call on our city staff. I'll look to our city attorney first to re-report out on special closed session meeting.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the council, as you mentioned, we did have a special meeting immediately prior to this meeting, where we held a closed session on existing litigation with Water Auto California, and there is no reportable action from that closed session. That's my only report.
Thank you, and I will look to the city manager to get a report from him.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Brief update this evening. I'm going to have our city engineer provide an update on our weekend storm, but associated with that is a closure of Silverado Trail due to damage associated with the storm. The county has issued a nixle this afternoon, just after 4:00 PM, announcing that repairs are expected to reopen the road to at least one-way traffic in approximately three weeks. We will learn more as they get further into that project. Work is underway now to plan for that repair. And in the interim, we're asking that residents please limit trips when possible, carpool if possible, travel at non-peak hours, and be as cautious as possible in that area. And in addition to that, the homecoming parade is scheduled for November 5th. That traditionally runs down Highway 29, Main Street, and city staff is having active conversations with the administration at the school district, as well as the high school, and we anticipate announcing an alternate route for that parade that would not use Main Street while it encounters the congestion associated with the closure of Silverado Trail. And those are my comments tonight. Thank you.
Let me touch upon this weekend storm, if I may.
Yes, please.
So this weekend, on Sunday specifically, most of the day, Sunday, as you all know, was quite a deluge. We here in St. Helena have received more than 9.5 inches of rainfall. The city experienced localized flooding throughout town, of course. Leaking occurred at four city buildings. I put four city, Mark, because I did report the water treatment plant, but it was the police station, Public Works corp yard restroom, the library, and again, the water treatment plant. So we got some leaking roofs, tendroofs. Pump failure at the corporation yard also occurred. Staff had challenges with starting two pumps and following up with the vendor to diagnose the issue. Currently, we're repairing an eight-inch water main in town. A tree fell over during the storm, and the roots of that tree caused damage to an eight-inch water main, and it's complicated because it's an intersection of other water mains in the area, and so it's a complicated fix. And so a guy's been working it now for two days. We be trying to finish it up this weekend. We'd had sanitary sewer overflows down the storm drain near Central Up Pump Station due to a blockage. This is not, it is typical, but not, we should, we should be avoiding these. It was clean and reported. It will be reported to state. In terms of the reservoir, I think we talked a little bit, we did good, good reaction from Bell Canyon, but that's to be continued discussion.
Thank you. Are there any other reports from city staff at this point?
Well, yes, I'd like to report also, I'll give you, there is still a drought, so I'm gonna report about the Flume update. As of today, there are 78 devices have been purchased directly through the Flume landing page, and 65 customers have submitted rebate applications. These are devices, of course, purchased before the rebate program was established. A total of 143 devices have been obtained through the Water Conservation Program. For anyone interested in purchasing a Flume device, please visit the Flume webpage, and it's, the landing page is accessible through the city's webpage.
Very good, thank you. I'm seeing our finance director, Dr. Mitz, with the reports.
Great, thank you very much. Just a reminder is that although we did have those great storms over the weekend and a lot of water, we are still in a Phase Two water emergency, so just wanted to provide a reminder out to, to the public and to the council. And in addition, under our municipal code, so it's section 13.04.240, specifically section C, when it comes to a Phase Two water emergency, outdoor water allocations are only through April through October, so effective November 1st, which is effective Monday, any outdoor allocations granted automatically through that section are no longer in effect. So just wanted to let everybody know. If you did get an exception for outdoor allocation under the exception section of the municipal code, those are still valid. It's just the, the ones under that particular section of the municipal code. In addition, we are planning on, we're hoping to read meters tomorrow to go with our normal schedule. However, I did want to praise the public and the, and the council that because of the water main emergency right now that Public Works is dealing with, we are doing everything that we can to actually get those meters read tomorrow, but that could be something to factor into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any additional reports by staff? I'm seeing none. I just want to put out a thank you, a deep thank you to the staff, to the Public Works, Fire, Police, Emergency Services for the work through the storm, through city staff in general for keeping the focus as we move through those, you know, those challenges. So thank you, thank you very much. I'll move now to our council and see if there are any reports from council or input from council here. I'm seeing Councilmember Chateau.
Thank you. I wanted to report briefly on our countywide climate action committee that I attended, because we had some notes after. So just in June 2021, the county received a 50,000 grant from the Bay Area Quality Management District to pay for regional greenhouse gas inventory, and community groups came forward and, on the committee, we all, we supported moving forward to also have an inventory of short-term, or short-lived climate pollutants, and also an assessment for potential for carbon sequestration. That cost was not included, so that has been divvied up by the different regions. St. Helena's share looks like it'll be an additional 4,000. It's great that we're doing that, because there's so much that we can do with carbon sequestration, living in the ag preserve and the open space, and we know that that's part of the problem with the globe heating up. So I just wanted to let everybody know about that, and I'll make sure that I send the notes out to everybody.
Thank you. Additional comments, input from council here? And I am seeing none, so I will, I have a few comments here. We have an upcoming flood control board meeting where I'll be continuing conversations about water resources, both, both locally and regionally. We're continuing the work on the groundwater sustainability advisory committee that's coming towards its, its conclusion, so those, that information should be more available soon. And I just want to take a moment to say thank you to, for all the messages of love and support on the, this is a personal note on the passing of my mother Phoebe, but I also want to take a moment to recognize and remember all those loved ones we have lost as a community through these challenging times. I would like to suggest that we consider some type of special day or period of remembrance each year for all those in our community that we lose. In a small town like ours, the contributions of each individual really make a difference in the enrichment of our community, and many of those of the generation that are now passing had, had much to do with the shaping of St. Helena and Napa County as we know it now, and I want to be sure we honor them. So we'd like to have an ongoing conversation about consideration of a special day of remembrance for community members that we lose as time goes by. So I just want to put that out there. And with that, I will then move on to our presentations and recognitions. And this is, we're gonna start here with the 7.1. This is the proclamation recognizing the fifth annual St. Helena Movember Men's Health Month, November 1st through November 30th, 2021, and this is going to be presented to Chief of Police Chris Hartley. I will read the proclamation, and I hope Chief Hartley is here to give us a few words. Chief, are you, are you able to hear where I, hear me now?
Yes, I am, and I will be able to respond, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. This is the City of St. Helena proclamation, the fifth annual St. Helena Movember Men's Health Month, November 1st through November 30th, 2021. Whereas prostate cancer is the second most common cancer in men in the U.S., and testicular cancer is the most common cancer in young men aged 15 to 34 in the U.S., and around one in four adults in the U.S. will experience a mental health problem in a given year. And whereas numerous studies have shown that early detection of any form of cancer is instrumental in combating the disease, and since using early detection tests for prostate cancer become fairly common in the United States around 1990, the prostate cancer death rate has dropped. And whereas the American Cancer Society recommends prostate cancer screenings for men of average risk who are 50 years old or higher, men of high risk who are 45 years or older, and men of even higher risk, those with two or more direct relatives who have had prostate cancer who are 40 years and older. And whereas the key to educating people about the benefits of early detection through routine exams is creating awareness campaigns designed to stimulate conversation, and whereas the Movember movement, which began in 2003, has raised over $650 million and funded over 1,000 programs focusing on prostate cancer, testicular cancer, poor mental health, and physical inactivity in men, now therefore be it resolved that I, Jeff Ellsworth, Mayor of the City of St. Helena, along with the St. Helena City Council, do hereby proclaim November 1st through November 30th, 2021, Movember, Men's Health Month. Thank you, and I will pass this over to Chief Hartley.
Thank you, Mayor and council. Good evening. As you know, this is very personal to me, as I've gone through my share of physical impairments due to prostate cancer, and I'm glad to say that I'm a survive, 10-year survivor. You'll, you may notice that men will misplace their razors this Movember, but what exactly does that signify? The purpose of No Shave November or Movember is about more than just whose facial hair grows the fastest, and seeing your friends and all kinds of celebrities sporting their mustaches. The theme of Movember is changing the face of men's health, and the month's purpose is to raise awareness about three of the biggest health risks affecting men: prostate cancer, testicular cancer, and mental health issues. The best way to celebrate the month, encourage the men you love to be aware of their risks, and know how to prevent the problems. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. We, we really appreciate it. Thank you. So we'll move now to our consent items. This is where members of the council or public may ask that any items be considered individually for purposes of considering alternative action for extended discussion or for public comment, unless that is done, one motion may be used to adopt all recommended actions. I have a few of these that I'll have to read in full, but I'll go through them and see if any one would like to pull any of these items. So we'll start with 9.1. We'll move to 9.2. 9.3. 9.4. 9.5. Oh, I'm seeing Councilmember Hardy. Are we going to pull 9.4?
Yes, please.
And we'll move then to 9.5. This is one that I have to read, 9.5 and 9.6. I'll read those, and then we can pass the, or put it out for a motion to pass the consent calendar and then return to 9.4. So 9.5 is consideration and proposed approval of a resolution authorizing, one, the addition of four additional full-time firefighter positions, two, implement a 4896-hour rotating shift for all full-time and part-time firefighter personnel of St. Helena, three, authorizing a budget increase of $315,970 to fire department salary and benefits in fiscal year 2021-22, and authorizing use of general fund reserves in an amount of the same. The, this is a secret determination, is not a secret project, and this. Let me, Cindy, I don't have to read this section. Is that correct? Okay.
That's correct. It's the title.
Yes, so then we'll move to 9.6. This is consideration and proposed approval of a resolution, one, approving employment agreement between the City of St. Helena and John Sorensen, fire chief, increasing hours of work from 20 to 30 hours per week, and adjusting workdays to a four, 10-hour day shift structure effective October 27, 2021. In accordance, two, in accordance with the requirement of California Code Section 5953(c)(3), approving the recommended final action for the fire chief that provides that the additional 10 hours per week increases the annualized base salary to $176,800, establishing the local government fire and emergency base hourly rate to be $85, and the average actual rate to be $91.50. Four, duly adopting and approving publicly available pay schedules in accordance with the requirement of California Code of Regulations Title II, Section 570.5, to include the new annualized salary for the fire chief. And five, approving a budget increase of $27,730 to fire department salary and benefits for the increase of hours from October 27, 2021 to June 30, 2021, and use of general fund unassigned reserves of the same. So with that, I will ask for a motion to pass the consent calendar with the exception of item 9.4. So moved.
Second.
Mark?
Just one point of clarification. I think the resolution has an error that should have read June 30, 2022. And so with that correction, we should be okay.
Very good, thank you.
I'm, I'm sorry, which resolution?
It's on 9.6. At the bottom.
Would you roll call?
Yes, please.
Councilmember Hardy?
Yes.
Chateau?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Doring?
Yes, as amended.
Mayor Elfrid?
Yes. Thank you. We'll return now to item 9.4, and I'll pass this to Councilmember Hardy.
Thank you. I just had a couple of questions, and my apologies at the outset to staff for not having reached out prior to the meeting, but let me just get that staff report back on my screen, and not sure if this question should be addressed to Mark Rincon or Martine Beltran, but looking at the a projection. I'm looking at the assumptions at the top of that sheet. Number two, a continued 37% reduction. I'm just wondering how that has been calculated.
Yes, council member. I'm gonna have Martine talk to the report. Martine, if you wouldn't mind, I'm muting yourself.
Yes, give me one second. I'm pulling up that spreadsheet now. It is. Give me one second. So it's a 37% reduction from fiscal year 1920. It's how that, that's being calculated.
And, and how is the 37% value selected?
It's just a basis of our, what was trending at the time that the forecast was done.
Okay, so that reflects recent actual demand in comparison with 2020?
That is correct.
Okay, and, and then a very similar question. This is my last question. How did we select the 20% value for reduction in the non-irrigation month?
That was a selection based off most of the reduction occurring in the summer months due to outdoor irrigation, so we're lowering that number to be more conservative for the winter months.
Okay, thank you very much.
And Councilmember Hardy, that, the technical term for that may be best described
And Councilmember Hardy, that, the technical term for that, um, may be best described as educated guess at this point.
Understood. I, uh, and again, I, uh, uh, my apologies for not having, uh. Raised these questions with staff prior to the meeting, uh, um, but thank you. Uh, I, I may wish to follow up later, but in the meanwhile, I'm, uh. Uh, happy to, uh, move approval of item nine point four.
And is there a second?
I'll second.
I'm saying. Think I'm seeing our, uh, city attorney with a hand up. I'll just jump in, uh, with him here.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a reminder to see if there's any public comment on this.
My bad. Uh, we'll, uh, look to our city clerk and see if we have, uh, public comment.
There is no public comment.
Okay, we'll bring it back to the council. We have a motion and we have a second. Uh, and maybe we have a roll call, please.
Do you Councilmember Hardy make the first?
Yes.
Make the motion? Okay. And who made the second? I'm sorry.
Councilmember Hall.
Councilmember Hardy?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Chateau?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Dory?
Yes.
Mayor Ellsworth?
Yes. Very good. We'll move now to, uh, Section ten, Public Hearings. This is item ten point one. This is consideration and proposed approval of a resolution approving the annexation of territory. Into the St. Helena Municipal Sewer District Number One, MSD Annexation Number one four one. One Thousand Mills Lane, St. Helena, California, APN zero zero nine dash zero seven zero dash zero four nine. Zero zero nine dash zero seven zero dash zero five two. Zero zero nine dash zero seven zero dash zero five three. And zero zero nine dash zero seven zero dash zero five four. And this is, uh, Martine Beltran.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. Uh, on October thirteenth, twenty twenty, City Council held a notice public hearing. Approving Resolution twenty twenty-one, uh, dash one hundred. This was for the use permit design review. Lot line adjustment, lot merger variance, water agreement and development agreement for the farmstead. At Long Meadow Ranch Project. PL twenty dash oh oh two of one thousand Mills Lane. In which the property owner was conditioned to annex into the city's, uh, municipal sewer district number one. Earlier, uh, on September fourteenth, we had the first public hearing for the sewer annexation process in which a resolution was adopted. Ordering tonight's public hearing. Per our municipal code sections thirteen point zero two zero point zero four zero. And thirteen point zero, uh, two zero point zero seven zero. The property owners required annex into the city's municipal sewer district. Pay annexation and connection, uh, and impact fees. The applicant has completed this step. Um, if council does approve the attached resolution to allow the property at one thousand Mills Lane to be annexed into the city's. Sewer system following tonight's hearing, city staff will then process the annexation with the county and the state BOE. I don't believe the applicant is present, but staff is available if there are any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions, uh, from council at this point, input from council? I am seeing none. Uh, I will bring it back and we'll look to the, uh, we'll look to, uh. The city clerk to see if there's public comment on this matter.
There is no public comment.
Seeing not, oh, I now I'm, uh, so I'll bring it back to our council. I'm seeing our city attorney, uh, Mr. Walsh.
Uh, ju- just to clarify, Mayor, because it's a public hearing, you should, oh, open and close the public hearing.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. So what we'll all do now is I will open the public hearing. And at this point then look towards, uh, uh, the, uh, city clerk to see if we have public comment.
There is none.
Very good. So I'll bring it back to the council. Is there, are there any questions or is there any input from council at this point? I'm seeing none. Uh, is there, uh, a, a motion to adopt the recommended action? So moved.
I'll second.
And a roll call, please.
Councilmember Hardy?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Chateau?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Dory?
Yes.
Mayor Ellsworth?
Yes. And at this point, I'll look to the city attorney now. At this point is where I close the public hearing. Is that correct?
Yes, you can, yes, you can close.
Okay, so with that, I will close the public hearing. Uh, and we have our, our motion and our roll call, so, uh, thank you very much. We'll now move on to, uh, um. Old business. Uh, we'll, we'll start with item eleven point one. This is an informational update on Water Advisory Board's role and experience in reviewing requests. For water leak penalty waivers and consideration of proposed. Resolution providing for administrative approval of specified penalty waiver requests. Meeting the Water Advisory Board's established criteria, and this is Dr. Mits.
Great. Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Councilmembers. Uh, so as you know, the Water Advisory Board was established when we established a phase two water emergency within the city of St. Helena. Um, on October thirteenth, um, after the implementation of the first round of penalties for June twenty twenty-one. On October, or I'm sorry, July thirteenth, the city council did hold a special meeting. To receive a presentation of the June twenty twenty-one water usage penalties. And also discuss a recommendation to approve a water penalty forgiveness program. Given that the scale of the initial penalties for the first month was two point nine million dollars. On July twenty-seventh, um, following the, the special meeting on the thirteenth. The city council did adopt a resolution that approved a water penalty forgiveness program. Related to the June and July twenty twenty-one water use penalties. Additionally, the city council did recognize that during a phase two or phase three water emergency. Penalties may have been incurred by customers as a result of a leak. And they did provide direction to staff designating that the Water Advisory Board. Can make and or hear a determination for reduce, for reduction of penalties for those customers. Who received a penalty as a result of a water leak. So following that resolution. The Water Advisory Board on our August sixth. Six did adopt, uh, policy P dash F I dash zero zero two two. Which is a leak adjustment policy for phase two and phase three water penalties. Um, so what this policy did, it did establish, um, very specific guidelines. Um, and criteria that would have to be met in order for a portion or all of a penalty to be forgiven. So the following criteria, uh, must be met, and a lot of the criteria does follow. Directly in line with what is on the current leak adjustment policy. So the established policy. Just states that the customer must have not received a leak letter for two or more consecutive months. Or that they can demonstrate that there is a good faith effort to actively locate and fix the leaks. All leaks must be beyond the control of the owner, agents, tenants, contractors, or anyone occupying the property. Or using the property that could have reasonably foreseen such a, such a possible leak. The leak cannot be the result of negligent, willful, or neglectful behavior. And proof of their repairs were completed must be included with all requests for the penalty leak adjustment. Examples of the, um, can be a copy of the plumber's, plumber's invoice. Or hardware store invoice receipts, uh, showing items purchased. Or proof that the city, um, that the water use had been returned to normal usage. And that can easily be seen by looking at a customer's, um, uh, his, history on the account. In addition to that, the Water Advisory Board, um, would consider penalty leak adjustments amounts on a case-by-case basis. With the following consideration, so up to a hundred percent for the first leak and up to fifty percent for subsequent leaks. Um, what the board has been finding and staff has been finding, sometimes it can take several months to actually get a leak fixed. Uh, we are currently calling it, uh, almost a whack-a-mole. Sometimes they will re, uh, fix one leak in the property. Get that one under control and then very shortly afterwards, a second leak would pop up. So we want to make sure that there's enough leeway in the policy to be able to address those types of situations. So since the adoption of the policy, um, thirty-three appeals have been brought before the Water Advisory Board for consideration. Over the course of the last four meetings. Currently, the Water Advisory Board meets two times a month. It's on the first and the third, um, Fridays of the month. Um, they have to meet at least once, but we have been meeting twice because it has been necessary. Um, out of those meetings, uh, three of the thirty-three penalty appeals. That have been heard are being continued to future meetings, just to see if there was actually. A decrease in water to use to make sure that the penalty has been repaired. The Water, Water Advisory Board has denied one penalty waiver in its entirety. And approved a portion of three of the penalty waivers. And those were instances where they might have approved, um, one hundred percent of the penalty waivers for one month, but not for the subsequent month. Um, and then they did approve a hundred percent of the penalties for the remaining twenty-six water penalty appeals. Uh, what this equates to is a total penalty reduction of approximately seven hundred and seventy thousand dollars. And this is off of the hundred percent. So as we know, uh, penalties incurred for June, only twenty-five percent was actually. Applied to the account, allowing for customers the option to, um, if they got their water use under control for future months. Um, the other seventy-five percent wasn't tacked on at first for, uh, for June, and then for July, it was the fifty percent. So the seven hundred and seventy, seven hundred and seventy thousand dollars represented is for the full penalties that would be imposed. And of this amount, five hundred and thirty thousand, so the majority of it. Were, as it was attributed to three particular customers who had very substantial leaks. Additionally, it can be, uh, seen that collectively, just out of those water customers. That filed for the penalty appeals, this doesn't include the other appeals that are in the queue right now. There has been a reduction of over twenty-eight hundred HCF. From the time the leak occurred to future months where the, where we showed that the leak had been fixed. And this does equate to two point one million gallons. Um, and so looking at some of those numbers, we can see that. Having the, the mechanism in place for the penalties. Have definitely had a cause and effect where it does, um, prompt people to actually fix and correct their leaks that they have on the property. Additionally, if you look at overall use. Post the leak, so you, we look at the same timeframe last year, so let's say it's a June twenty twenty timeframe. If we look at, let's say comparative to August. Once the leak has been corrected, we have seen an overall consumption, uh, decline of eight hundred and ninety-five HCF. Or, or almost six hundred and seventy thousand gallons. Um, so again. We are seeing trends that people are looking, you know, seriously at this water situation that we're in, and a good reminder that even though we've had the rain. We are still in a water, water situation. Um, so following the, following, uh, the appeals that have been heard so far. The Water Advisory Board did meet last Friday. And what they did is they did make the recommendation, because what they're finding is over the course of these penalty leak appeals. Approximately eighty percent fall within their stat, clear cut fall within their established policy guideline. So what, um, what they did is they made the recommendation, and so this is something we're bringing to city council. For, um, for consideration tonight. Is one, it's an update on what's been going on with the Water Advisory Board and the leak penalties, um, that have been taken into consideration. But then also. The recommendation by the board that, uh, the city council approved the recommendation to allow, uh. The things that fall very clearly administratively under that policy. That allows my, myself, the administrative services director, or, or my designated authority to actually grant those. And so what this would do is reduce a substantial amount of paperwork. Um, as of right now, each penalty appeal that we process, it takes. Between an hour and an hour and a half just to process that and prep it and get it ready for the Water Advisory Board. Not to mention the amount of time it takes the Water Advisory Board to hear these items. Um, after the thirty-three appeals that they've already heard, we have over eighty in the queue to bring back to the Water Advisory Board. So we want to take this time to update the city council on, um, what's been going on with the Water Advisory Board and then break forth our recommendation to allow for that administrative. Um, administrative layer for approval. And with that, I do have Brent Randall, who is the chair of the committee, um, on hand tonight to also answer any questions. And Anna Chateau does also sit on the committee. And I do have to make one, one other plug for the Water Advisory Board Committee. They have been a delight to work with. They are a very. Thoughtful, considerate group, and, um, for everything that they consider, um, all the matters in front of them. They're very thoughtful and it's, so far it's been a pleasure to work with them. So. With that, I will hand it over to the city council, and again, we have Brent online today that can answer any questions.
Thank, thank you. I'm going to hand it over to Councilmember, uh, Chateau here and Mr. Randall in just a moment, but I want to. Put out a, a, a thank you to the work that the Water Advisory, uh, Board has done. Um, it's really helped our council and the fact that you've been able to find efficiencies. Uh, working and focusing on this, it's, it's really been a great benefit to the city. Uh, so I'll pass it to Councilmember Chateau and then, uh, we'll see if Mr. Randall has any comments as well.
Okay, thank you. Um, I just wanted to say thank you to all of the water board members because I have seen how they've. Worked with such thoughtfulness and also just attention to detail. It's incredible with all of the work, the good work that our staff is doing to get these reports to us. It takes a lot of time and energy to focus in on the numbers. And, and see that the stories are matching what we're hearing with the numbers and wade through all the detail. So I'm just so grateful for their service, their public service and how they're volunteering the time for us. We're seeing lessons learned over and over again about irrigation. We just see so many leaks that are so hard to find. And that multiple, you just people that are struggling with, to get a handle on their leaks and. We can see through the Water Advisory Board, what we're looking for is that people. Do move fast when they see these leaks and when they get the information and they're, they're solving the problem and then showing us with data that they have. And that they then have reducing their water that they're using after that. So we're just seeing irrigation over and over again be such a problem for so many people. We've also seen a theme of out-of-town owners, that being a challenge. When they aren't here and they're seeing their property and the leaks when it happened, and then as soon as this happens and they come through us and they're dealing with it. They're making changes and we're talking to them about that, like, okay, so what's your new system now? How are you going to be able to know? And a lot of times they're having people come check the property. So that's helpful. Same thing with pools. We had a pool that had a leak. And the question we asked is, okay, how are you going to know about this faster next time? And there is. I don't know if it's an app or it's some kind of technology through a pool service that you can get that can alert you when there is a leak. So I just encourage people to be looking for these new technologies and new information out there to help. Us all as we continue to work to save water, and I bet our chair will have a couple of other words to say.
Yeah, the one thing I would say is thank you to April and Cindy. They've done a Herculean job putting these packages together. And to give you just a little color on what we were thinking was, as, as, as April said. It takes about an hour to put together every leak appeal for our board. And we were kind of looking at the, the board does a really good job of reading things in depth and coming prepared to the meeting. And I said, at our last meeting, I said, well, can we run it kind of like a consent calendar where? We just go approve, you know, one, three, five and seven, let's pull four and eight and discuss it. Um, because Anna's right, um, people have come to us, they've done a great job of trying to solve their leaks. What we are running into, you know, leak companies are hard to get right now with, with the water problem, so. Um, I would address any questions that, that Anna or April, um, has not already covered.
Great, and thank you for being here. I'll, I'll put it to the council now to see if there are any questions or any input from the rest of the council at this point. I am seeing none. Uh, so what we'll do is we'll open it to public comment. I'll look to our city clerk to see if we have any public comment on this.
We do. Maria, I'm going to allow you to speak and you can address the council. Just unmute yourself, please.
Um, yes, I was just wondering with the recent main, uh. Water line that broke recently, how does that impact the residents', um, usage? Will it decrease the amount of usage then if there's an excessive amount of? Water wasted in these. Main lines that have. Broken?
Thank you. I'll, I can, uh, uh, point, uh, I'm looking at the city manager or our public works director if they want to take that question.
I, I can actually answer that question for you. Um, so the amount of consumption for, for all of our customers, whether it's residential, commercial, multifamily. Um, what is, what regulates right now is the phase two water emergency. So as our municipal code states, the phase two, that's what gives us our limits of the sixty-five gallons per day, per person. For residential plus the de- for residential plus the decrease over the three-year average for our non-residential customers. The only thing that would change that residential and non-residential allocation is if we moved into a phase-three emergency. So if there is a significant enough break, and it would be, have to be very significant to bring the reservoir levels down to a certain point, that's what would trigger the phase-three. But as of right now, the one water main break that we have, it is not taking us from a phase-two to a phase-three. And I'd definitely turn it over to Mark Greencone if he had any other input on that.
Thank you, April. No, you've got it covered. We're still in the phase-two and we're not planning on doing any immediate changes to that phase just yet.
Thank you. I'll look to our city clerk to see if there's any other public comment at this point.
There is none.
Okay, we'll bring it back to our council. Is there any other council input as we look towards the staff recommendation? I'm seeing no council hands, so what I'll do is entertain a motion to follow staffer recommendation and approval of the attached resolution.
I'll move approval.
I'll second.
And a roll call, please.
Now, sir Chateau?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Party?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Doring?
Yes.
Mayor Ellsworth?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Randall, for your, your public service.
See everybody. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for being here. And thank you very much to the, the Water Advisory Committee, with really tremendous work. And staff as well. We really appreciate the, the deep focus here. We'll move now to eleven point two. This is consideration and proposed approval of a resolution adopting the City of St. Helena's integrated pest management policy. And this is Priya Nixon, our assistant to the city manager.
Yes, good evening, Mayor and City Council. Can everyone hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, great. Thank you so much. Yes, so I'm here to talk about the Integrated Pest Management draft policy. And I also want to recognize that I have Carlos Uribe from Public Works who's here. And Carlos, thank you for being here. I know you've been quite busy. So I have a brief presentation that I'd like to give. And if it's all right, I'm going to share my screen. So let's see if I can do this. All right, let me see if I can put it into presentation mode. Are you able, Mayor Ellsworth, to see the presentation?
Yes, I can see it, and I'm assuming, unless we see some hands, that everybody else can as well.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you so much. All right, so I'd like to talk a little bit about what is an integrated pest management policy and why have one? And talk a little bit about the background, but I think before I get started, it would be helpful for me to just read this here. I know it looks like a lot, but it's a lot for a reason. And it talks about decision-making, making practices that we'll use for this draft policy. So the Integrated Pest Management, Integrated Pest Management, or IPM, means a decision-making process for managing pests that use monitoring to determine pest injury levels and combines biological, cultural, mechanical, physical, and chemical tools and other management practices to control pests in a safe, cost-effective, and environmentally sound manner that contributes to the protection of public health. This method uses extensive knowledge about pests such as infestations, thresholds, life histories, environmental requirements, and natural enemies to complement the, and facilitate biological and other natural control of pests. This method involves the use of non-chemical pest control methods, that's very important, and careful use of least-toxic chemical methods when non-chemical methods have been exhausted or are not feasible. And I put this up here because this is really a great way to describe how this policy approaches pest management. And when we're talking about pests, we're talking about, could be insects, could be rodents, it could be a certain type of plant, it could be bugs, so that is how we are defining pests. And this is actually a very highly regulated entity. And, and the entities that regulate it are the U.S. EPA, the California Department of Pesticide Regulation, and Napa County. So we have federal, state, and local entities that are providing guidance and regulation on this. So I want to talk a little bit about the scope of the policy. So this policy governs not only the Department of Public Works employees, but also contractors hired by the city and persons acting under authority or on behalf of the city in the care and maintenance of city parks, landscaped areas, city-owned easements, access rights, and all other city-owned properties as applicable. The term pesticide, as I had mentioned, is a general term that includes herbicides, pesticides, fungicides, and rodenticides. And so I'd like to just pause for a second and say that a really critical component of this policy is making sure that when we think about using the least-toxic method, we have the right people who are educated in making decisions and they're aware. And so we have, this policy recommends the designation of an IPM coordinator, an Integrated Pest Management Coordinator, someone who must have training and pass a very rigorous certification process through the Department of Pesticide Regulation. And currently, Carlos Uribe is really the expert in this and is overseeing this and has been doing this. And I should mention that the Department of Public Works has been pretty much following the recommendations that we are bringing forth for your consideration for quite a while. And that's actually a requirement as part of having an IPM coordinator. So I want to say that this is actually a council, this is on your council goals. So I'd like to thank you for your leadership and bringing it forward. And a component of having it on the council goals involves staff creating a draft policy and bringing it to the Active Transportation and Sustainability Committee. And we brought this to the ATSC in August. And I'd like to give a very warm shout-out to Vice Mayor Doring, who is the council liaison and who provided some great insights as well at the meeting we had in August. And I just want to recognize that when we brought this to ATSC, they actually gave us some really great feedback that enhanced the policy. So what we're bringing to you is incorporates nine pieces of feedback. And I think it really makes it, it clarifies some questions that they had. And it also took into consideration some ideas that we hadn't considered before. And I should also mention that integrated pest management policies are, they're, they're very widely used by many agents, by most public agencies. As I mentioned, we have been pretty much abiding by what we're recommending. But this policy, as I mentioned in the staff report, is really a combination of best practices from Marin County, Santa Rosa, San Rafael. So we really took the time to look at all of these different agencies to find what is most comprehensive for St. Helena and also to incorporate some of the feedback as well. So I just think it's really important that we thank the Active Transportation and Sustainability Committee for the time that they took. And these recommendations that they have made at the August meeting have actually been incorporated into the draft policy that we have put forward for your consideration. So thank you for all of that hard work, ATSC. So I talked a little bit about this, but I'm a huge fan of, you know, how do we know where we're going if we don't know where we are? So as I said, the IPM really does use best practices and try to mitigate a pest by exhausting all options before using a chemical response to pest management. And so this is really utilized through three main practices, cultural, biological, and mechanical practices, and I'm going to get to that on my next slide. But I also want to let everyone know that the city has self-imposed restricting the use of glyphosate since two thousand and eighteen, which is another term for roundup. So the city has made efforts to do this. And this policy is a great way to solidify that and also say, these are the other things that we're doing as well. And so, so I talked a little bit about cultural, biological, and mechanical options to pest management. So I'm actually going to, Carlos, I don't know if maybe you want to talk a little bit about some more of the examples of cultural being soil management, use of compost. Biological, an example could be using an owl's nest. And mechanical would be using a weed whacker. And Carlos, I'm wondering if maybe you could just talk briefly about other examples and what, maybe what we're currently using for, for these different options.
Sure. Once again, good evening. Thank you for being here. And you can get me talking on this topic all day long. So if you guys ever want to get bored, you guys can always come chat with me about this. But really quick, as far as cultural goes, it also entails like irrigation methods. So one of the quick ones you see is like, why would you use? And again, this is the analysis that Priya's talking about. Why would you use overhead spraying when you're localized, your plant is literally one spot? The overhead spraying would promote weeds, right? You're going to get weeds growing around. Let me just say your roads wash. So a cultural approach to this would be you put drip irrigation. And now you've literally put water just where you want it, right at the roots of the plants. That's a very good one. Again, fertilizer application is another one. Sometimes you find that broadcast where you use the Worley Bird to apply fertilizer to areas where that are not needed, so as opposed to maybe using fertilizer stakes that you literally embed into the ground at the base where the plant gets most of its nutrients, gets all of its nutrients. So that's, that's another example of cultural. Biological, again, you're using known enemies for pests. So a owl's nest, you would use wherever you're finding a rodent issue, right? So that would be a good one, would be like on our levee where you start to see gopher holes. You start planting owl boxes and they will naturally take care of the pest for you. Another one that people probably have heard, it's a very common one, is the use of ladybugs for aphids on your roses. That's another good biological approach. And then mechanical, of course, weed whacker is probably the most common one you're seeing now. But also when you're plowing, plowing fields, so you're using mechanical, like with a tractor, or you're using a mower, like a plow mower, sorry, a flail mower is usually the most common one to cut your weeds down to a four-inch, which is what we use during, during fire season, and letting the, letting Mother Nature take care of the rest, right? You cut them really low, and then the heat takes, takes over the rest. They starve, they have no water, and they're gone. So until you have to do it again. So that's a little bit more in-depth as far as the applications, those three applications for pest control.
Great, thank you so much, Carlos. And again, we talk about these because they are the alternative best practice methods instead of using a pesticide. So let's go to the next slide here. And let's talk just a little bit about what some of the guidelines are. Again, this has all been in the draft policy. So I want to talk just briefly about the toxicity categories. So the U.S. EPA has categories for toxicity. And this policy is recommending to eliminate the category one and category two. And as I mentioned before, this is very common standard for all IPMs to have this. So we are really pulling the best practices. And so then to minimize the use of the toxicity categories three and four. And so I won't read through all of these, but really, we're looking at recommending eliminating the use of pesticides that are classified by government agencies known as probable or possible carcinogens. And so again, this is very standard here. And I highlighted number four, which is really to only use the pesticide when necessary, but to focus on cultural, mechanical, and biological. And I'll just add that another, another part of doing an IPM is that it's in compliance with stormwater, with the NPDES permit for stormwater requirement. So this is also important. So I want to talk very briefly about what we have put forward for, if there does need to be a use for a pesticide, an approved limited use and banned products list. And so what I'm going to do here, it's in the policy, but I actually think it might be helpful just to share what that looks like. So I'm going to stop my screen share. Okay, let's see if I can do this here. Hold on one second. I'm going to hold this up right here. So this is the policy that's attached to the staff report. And this is just an example of what the, this is not an example. This is the approved use products list. And it really does include, again, all of the different types of actions that we talked about before. So we do have an option for a limited use products list. And so this is really, if necessary, the IPM coordinator will take the time to make a recommendation to the Public Works Director if there does need to be approval. But this will not be something that is, you know, heavily utilized, will really push working with the cultural, mechanical, and biological. And so there will be requirements in terms of what they'll need to do to submit that. And then I also wanted to just show here the banned products list. So nothing will be used on the banned products list. And so this is again listed in the policy. And then the ATSC asked that we put together some policies on if there was an absolute emergency, what do we have to do? And it's very similar to use, use of the limited use list. No product on the bans list will be used. And this time, we are asking for the city manager to provide, to allow as well. So they will have to sign off as well for this. So I just wanted to share that in the event of an emergency, this is the process for using this. So I'm going to stop the screen share and go back to the presentation. Hold on one second. I'm almost done. And let me put this here, presentation mode. Okay. So the last thing that I wanted to talk about is the Healthy Schools Act. So schools also have very rigorous requirements for use of pesticides on their property. And I put this in because there is some information regarding when a school, when a city park may be having programming with a school that we have to adhere to the Healthy Schools Act. They're very similar policies. It just has to do with the requirement of posting a notification, which is also listed in the policy. There's a great flowchart that sort of shows like when it's, when the Healthy Schools Act is applicable. But it's really only one location in the city, which is Crane, which is Crane Park and the Head Start Building. Again, I bring this forward to you because we've already been in compliance and following those guidelines. So with that, that is the presentation. If there are any questions, Carlos and I are here to help answer. And then it is recommended for the council action to consider the adoption of a resolution approving the Integrated Pest Management Policy. And I'd just like to say thank you again to the Active Transportation and Sustainability Committee for providing their input. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'll take this to the council first in just a moment. But want to thank the staff for putting this forward and the work of the ATSC and Vice Mayor Doring. For clarification, this is for public property. This is not, this does not apply to private property in the city, but this applies to public property of the cities.
Yes, that is correct.
Okay, very good. I have a few comments, but I want to put it to the council first and see if we have any input from the council. Seeing no comment from the council, two of the thoughts that I had were, one thing I saw on public comment was the recommendation of a, of a reporting, whether it's quarterly or, or yearly or half-yearly. I'd like to think about perhaps having something like that integrated in. And then also, on the banned products list, the, the concept of naming, you know, the synthetic pesticides, having some language in there recognizing synthetic pesticides as part of the banned products list, you know, for the, the, the long-term health, public health, particularly children with more delicate systems. So looking at a policy like this, as we know, it's been a practice in St. Helena. But this is excellent to see a policy coming forward as in many other cities and counties. But I do want to have us maybe consider having the language. But I do want to have us maybe consider having the language regarding synthetic pesticides. If we just name one such as glyphosate or Roundup, perhaps another one comes up, but with a brand name or something. But this way it would sort of cover synthetics. That's just a thought that I've got here. So if I'm seeing no other council hands up, I'll look then to the city clerk to see if we have any public comment.
There is no public comment.
Okay. So with that, I'll bring it back to the council and see if there are any thoughts on moving this forward and thoughts about perhaps including something regarding a reporting or the synthetic pesticide language. And I'm seeing Councilmember Hardy.
I think, well, I do see a member of the public with a hand raised.
Thank you. Sorry. We'll go to public comment.
Okay. You are allowed to unmute yourself and address the council.
Thank you. My name is Megan Cowan, and I am the Director of Sonoma Safe Ag Safe Schools, which serves to educate the public on safe pesticide policies, especially for cities and schools. So on behalf of Sonoma SAS, I would really like to congratulate the City of St. Helena for bringing forward this more protective pesticide use policy that prohibits the use of glyphosate and disallows pesticides at playgrounds, parks, libraries, city hall, et cetera. I do agree with Mayor Ellsworth that naming other synthetic pesticides would be a great idea. And I just want to let you know that St. Helena, if and when this is passed, will be joining the majority of cities and schools in the North Bay that also have similar protective synthetic pesticide use policies. So really something that you all can be proud of. One big suggestion that I would make is that it would be great to include either quarterly or annual reporting so that city council could just watch the status of the new plan. It might be good to see where synthetic pesticides are being used still. When there are emergency exemptions, it might be good to know why. And it might also be good to see if organic products are being piloted, just to see how that is doing in the city. I found in my work in helping many cities transition away from synthetic pesticides, that this type of transparency can go a long way in building trust and a positive relationship between city staff and council and the community. And in the end, really, this is the thing that's the most important. So just wanted to thank you again. And, you know, please do let me know if there's anything I can do to help out in the transition. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'll look to our city clerk to see if there's any additional public comment.
There is no additional public comment.
Okay, I'll bring it back to the council and I'll check with Councilmember Hardy if his hand up was for a comment on this or to point out the public comment.
Well, I, I do have just a couple of quick comments. Reporting seems like a very good idea to me, and I would suggest that we start with annual reporting. And, and then if, if that's not satisfactory, we can make it more frequent. But I, I think we should be careful about you know, how we add to our demands on staff time. And with respect to, you know, treating synthetic pesticides as a category rather than identifying particular pesticides. Having gone through the, really, I think quite excellent process that we have to get to the recommendation that's in front of us, I would want to hear from staff. And, and I'd want to consider whether that question should go back to the ATSC. But those are my thoughts. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'll, I'll look to Ms. Nixon to see her thoughts on that in terms of that type of language, et cetera.
Sure. So if I may provide some comments and then if city manager Presswicz or Carlos Uribe want to add. I think one of the important things about this policy is that it, it remains flexible in the sense that our goal is to eliminate use of pesticides, right? So if that means looking at a quarterly or a six-month basis at what we're using and saying, hey, we, we may, maybe we don't need to use this that much and be flexible with moving it around, I think that could be an option. I know that with the training that IPM coordinators required to do, they constantly receive updates on the different types of pesticides and alternatives that are being utilized. So that is something that they do as part of their continuing education. Carlos, I don't know if you have anything you'd like to add to that.
No, not at this time. I think you pretty much said it there. I'll give a quick example, which is a lot of the pesticide use, at least locally, a lot of it's done just by literally we reach out to the school district as much as they reach out to us for those alternatives. And we always have that great resource, which is the Napa County Act Commissioner, which they sent out notifications and they sent out, they sound, they'll send out stuff on, hey, you know, you guys, they, they kicked out a product that was called, and I'm not, this actually was called, it's called Weed Slayer. And we purchased it for an extended period of time. Effective, it wasn't as effective. I think they took it back off the market. They notify you, they bring it back on, they say this is a new and improved. So I kind of want to side with what Priya's saying as far as just as long as we keep that, that communication going, we keep our, our options open and allow for that, for that flexibility.
Thank you. And if the vice mayor, who's, who's been the liaison on the ATSC has any thoughts here in terms of, of where we are with this and supportive of the reporting idea being put onto this, do you have any input at this point?
I, I would accept the reporting on an annual basis at this point. Like to thank the ATSC. They, they really had a very robust discussion where they got into weeds, no pun intended. Excellent discussion that, and I also like to thank the staff for putting together such an excellent presentation. I'm, you know, I'm supportive of, of the flexibility that we need, but we have to turn, we have to provide some trust to our staff. And I, I want to be able, I want to emphasize again that the transition is limited. We've been doing this all along, essentially. So someone used the word transition as if it was a new thing. The policy has not been in place formally, but certainly informally, we've been doing much of this. So I think the transition will be smooth. And I, I would be very much supportive of Councilmember Hardy's suggestion to report back either to the council or through a report that's published on our website or both in a year's time and, and to see how that goes. I am concerned about staff time in terms of keeping track of it. Hopefully we're limited to those rare instant instances where something out of the ordinary is used and not sort of the regular products that we would normally use. I, I don't think we need to keep track of every single application, but the, the ones that would raise concern to anybody in the community. Something along those lines. So there's a little bit of balance there. Thank you.
I may add to that and might help you there, Councilmember Doring. We are actually supposed to, and we do report monthly to Napa County as far as our applications go. Again, it doesn't get to specifics, but it'll tell you this month we applied three ounces of whatever, whatever it is we sprayed. And it breaks it down and it breaks it down by EPA, PA number and everything. So the reporting shouldn't be that bad because we already have to do it to be able to comply with our annual ag permit. So that'd be compiling everything. It'll have the list of all the applications we had. Again, if we had one of those emergencies, that would also be listed on there. So like, like you said, stuff that we've already been doing it, we're just now, I think, formalizing it.
Well, thank you. And, and thanks staff very much. I'm seeing Councilmember Hall.
Thank you. I just, I'm trying to see what's different with this versus what we're already doing. I mean, first of all, this is for, for city uses, right? This is not for the general public. This is for, for city assets and staff and this group here. So it's a small number of assets. It's, it's probably primarily Carlos and his, his staff who's, who's doing this. They've been doing it for years. I, I mean, Roundup, we haven't used in almost four years now and we're doing monthly reporting. So I'm just wondering, what, what are we doing with this?
This is to formalize a policy rather than just being a practice. So this, as, as Vice Mayor Doring says, the transition will be limited because we're, this is what we're doing. But this will put it into a policy rather than, than just a practice and memorialize it as such.
And I noticed the staff report says that they're concerned about adhering to service levels in this policy in the staff's own report. So if we're already concerned about meeting the objectives in this policy, should we rethink that first to make sure that we can do this? In other words, I, I think everything here is good. I'm not like a pro Roundup guy. I'm just saying, what are we doing with staff time? And is this the right time to be adding this in, if we're adding anything in?
I think we've already decided that it was a council goal. It's a council goal. We've already made that determination. So we're, we're implementing a council goal, which I absolutely think is necessary to stand the test of time. So it's not based on individuals that come and go, but something that everybody gets on board. Policies are for that purpose, so that everybody knows what our policies are, who the coordinator is, who gets the training, how that filters down into the system is extremely important. And I don't think it's, I agree with you that if you think it's going to tax our, our existing workload and that, that appears to be the concern, I hope it does not, but it's, it, it would be a legitimate concern of mine also. And I'll leave that up to, to Mr. Uribe. I don't think it will be as the reports are already being made, so.
Thank you, Paul.
Sure.
Carlos or Priya, do either of you feel that you're going to be taking on additional work in, in adhering to this?
You want to go first, Priya?
Sure. So I was just going to say, thank you, Councilmember Hall, for your comment about the staffer, about the staff report. I think when we think about using mechanical abatement, for example, sometimes that means there might be, you might see a little bit of weeds, right? Instead of spraying, right? So I think you, you may see things that are a little bit different. But again, I'll echo what Vice Mayor Doring said, which is, this is, this formalizes the actions. And I'll just bring up something that ATSC really honed in on, which is the coordinator really doesn't have the authority to just say, you know, throw caution to the wind and just make any decision. This really allows a very strong decision-making process for if and when a pesticide needs to be used. And that's very helpful for posterity. And so that's one of the reasons why we wanted to outline all of those steps. And Carlos, do you have anything you'd like to add to that?
Thank you. Hit it on the head. Just for, I would add though on a side note, as far as, as far as extra workload, I mean, the report part will, and I guess we're going to kind of try as we go as far as compiling it. But the data is already all there. So it's, usually it's going to be data acquisition. It takes a lot, a big component of it, but it's there. And we just have to now find a pretty straightforward way of presenting it. Some of the presentations we saw and some of the other IPMs that we saw, it's like a page, right? Just a verbal page. And then it says, this is where we use, these are the parks that we used in. And as, as it kind of builds momentum from year to year, you're, you're modifying, you're, you know, did we acquire a new piece of land that we applied? Did we say, look, we, we are now accepting that this certain area, we're going to try to just use mechanical. We're going to allow a little bit more weeds to grow there. And we take that off as far as where we've been, where we've been using pesticides in the past. So I'm very optimistic that this won't take much more time than it already is taking to stay on top of it.
That, that makes me feel good, Carlos. Thank you. I know you're, you're the closest, you know, closest to the action in this department. So I appreciate that. I also think, Priya, one thought is there's lots of good ideas here that have come out of this conversation, including great examples that Carlos has given. I'm sure that he has many more. You know, it'd be wonderful to, while this is intended for city use, it would be great to figure out a way to get it up on the website and available to, to our residences as well.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank, thank you. And yeah, having our residents aware too of this and perhaps, you know, we show some, the, the leadership towards this type of moving in this direction. I, I saw Councilmember Chateau and City Manager Presswicz with a hand.
I just, the comments were already said that I was going to say about getting it up on the website. And also this in terms of, thank you, Councilmember Hall, for bringing up the concern about staff time. And to me, when I was reading that staff report, I really saw more that it's about us all understanding that it's a new aesthetic, that it's not so manicured when we're looking around our city. It's a more natural look. And that we're already doing this work and this is putting it in a policy. So I hope we can move forward with it because I really have seen also the Active Transportation and Sustainability Committee. I hear loud and clear all their time on this. And I want to show them that we value that and move forward on the policy that they worked on.
Right. Thank you.
Thank you. Sing, Mr. Presswicz.
I just also wanted to echo the spirit of Councilmember Hall's comments about the staff capacity is appreciated. And when we first initiated this at a staff level and decided to change procedures, we recognized that I think the most visible impact in our community would be with weeds because Roundup would help us. And it also had the most significant impact on our staff because the alternative was mechanical means. And as a result, I think it's fair to say that it only occurs at periods of time in the spring typically, when the weeds are growing. And so we generally make two to three rounds, maybe four if there's a late weather event. And as a result, there are certain trade-offs from a service level standpoint that sometimes occur. So it might mean that in, if there's a third rain, that after we've cut the final rain, it might mean that we pivot to, to mowing a park every three weeks, every four weeks in one particular month, just to offset the time investment and avoiding the Roundup use. So that's a, hopefully an example of how we're trying to also be stewards of our time.
That, that sounds great. Thank you, Mr. Presswicz. And Councilmember Chateau, thank you for the comments about making sure that the public's aware that maybe there's, things are looking a little bit more natural. So maybe it's a very appropriate conversation kicking off the month of Movember at the same time. Thank you.
Thank you. One other aspect too, is that some communities do have community groups, weekly weeder groups, et cetera. So there may be a conversation as we get into the springtime, how to incorporate something like that. I'm seeing Mr. Rincon.
I just wanted to point out the fact too, that these alternative products do have a higher price tag. So there is an impact to the budget as well.
Thank you. Thanks for that input too. So with that, looking at the staff recommendation in terms of moving the adoption of the, the integrated pest management policy to entertain that motion with the addition of, of the yearly reporting and looking for a motion on that.
Go move.
Second.
And a roll call, please.
Councilmember, sorry, Vice Mayor Doring?
Yes.
Councilmember Chateau?
Yes.
Hardy?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Mayor Ellsworth?
Yes. Thank you. We'll now move on to item 12.1. This is a status report of the City of St. Helena issued pop-up temporary use permits. And this is our planning director, Ms. DeRosa.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, great. This, excuse me, my video is off. The city clerk is going to assist with a PowerPoint for tonight. And while she's bringing that up, just for background. For why we're why we're here with pop-up permits, the impetus for the creation of the temporary use permits was feedback from our business community that the use permit process was too cumbersome, lengthy, and costly. Particularly for businesses that wanted to open up quickly. So to aid in the economic development recovery downtown, our pop-up temporary use permit ordinance has responded to that need, and as you saw in the staff report, there's a variety of metrics that we've used to report since 2018 of what that's looked like. So next slide, please. I'll go through just a summary of some of those metrics for you. Just so you have a better understanding which of what I think has been a successful launch. So to date, we've had 21 temporary use permits issued. So and if you had looked at that table attached to the staff report, that's a year-over-year increase in the number of permits issued. Two of the 21 permits resulted in an application for a permanent use permit. And those two businesses were the Gregory Lang Art Gallery and the Lang and Reed Tasting Room with Administrative Offices. And then eight of 21 permits were temporary in nature, which truly is where the pop-up comes from. And that some examples of that were the Community Wall Art Project on Hunt Avenue. There was an anniversary party. The Cameo Drive-In Theater requested two different permits. We also had a campaign office, a pumpkin patch. Gratitude wall and pure, fresh, clean event. And then 13 of the 21 permits were for brick-and-mortar type establishments. So that's a variety of retail or wine tasting uses that typically would need a use, a formal use permit. They were, I think, just testing the space and and that use permit was issued for those. And then as a result of doing this research, we did realize that one of the permits that was approved in 2019 has continued to operate without requesting a permanent use permit approval from the Planning Commission. And so as noted in the staff report, we are in the process of following up with them and asking them to formally apply for a use permit. So next slide, please. And so this table, as you know, is is also in your packet, and it breaks it down by year, starting at 2018. And you can see specifically what was the name of the business, where was it located? And, you know, the status of whether it went on to get a full use permit or not. So with without, I'll be available for questions, but I think just, you know, the summary conclusion that I just wanted to share with the City Council today is that, you know, I do think that this has been a successful program. It's been effective, business-friendly, helps us to really encourage investment and reduce vacancies in our storefronts. And with the turnaround time being, you know, a week, generally a week, no more than two weeks of the administrative staff review. And and only $500 for the permit, it it is, I think, a refreshing incentive program that we offer and as a standout for our city in the valley that I think you can be proud of, so. That wraps up my brief summary, and I'm available to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation and and the work on this and keeping this moving forward. I'll open it to council in just a moment. Are we seeing any comment from those applicants? It it seems that we've moved forward and found ways to streamline and be efficient with this. Are there any other suggestions in terms of what we can do with this policy to 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 sort of enhance it? Have that has that come in as well?
I would respond to that saying, more of the feedback has been to and we're we're doing this as part of our zoning code update, is to look at a wider breadth of uses that we could have downtown, particularly related to the arts, glassblowing, metalwork. And so because there is, I believe, a synergy and a catalytic advantage when you when you start mixing those uses, and of course, adding housing is always a great bottom-line booster for our downtown as well. And so we're we're looking at some of these things that will help just add more activation, and so there and another thing that we've done in our zoning code update that is going to help with the temporary use permits is actually we're doing a lot of more uses by right. So it wouldn't be surprising to see in two years if actually we 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 kind of flatline or have less. And that would be reflecting that we've actually removed some of the barriers of by formally requiring those projects to go all the way to Planning Commission. A lot of those now you're seeing are by right, and I've got two of my excellent zoning code subcommittee members here tonight. And they've been, you know, working with staff on this as well, so. Thank you for the question.
Yeah, well, thank you. I'll open it to, I see the city manager, and then I'll open it to the council.
I would just add that with it, and I know Mayor Ellsworth and Vice Mayor Doring were present at the time this was adopted. And at the time, the council had a policy discussion about whether to just to extend the temporary use permits to formula businesses and and if so, for how long. And the policy landed on three months. There was a consideration of a 12-month period. And there was a lot of curiosity about whether any formula business would take advantage of our pop-up ordinance in a way where they might have an announcement of a product and want to feature that in a storefront or something like that. Have an event surrounding that. And it's notable, I think, when I look at the data, that no formula business has taken advantage of our program. We don't know if it's because of the limitation of the time, three months as a minimum. I'm sorry, as a maximum. Or sometimes this formula businesses are constrained by smaller retail spaces, and there are a number of other considerations, the size of our town, et cetera. So just some, just an observation for our council to consider. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any counts, other council comments at this point? I'm seeing Councilmember Hall.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Rosa. Good report and great data. The, you know, the more business-friendly, the better, frankly, so kudos. Let's keep it rolling and to to the city's manager, to the city manager's comment, if there's any way to, you know, are there any changes that we we should consider going forward? Be great to have a follow-up on that at some point.
Very good. Additional council comment before I open the public comment. I am seeing none. I will move it to public comment, look to the city clerk to see if we have any hands up.
There is no public comment.
Okay, seeing none. We'll bring it back to the council. Look for any additional comment. This is a, we're just receiving the report. No action on this. Thank you very, very much. All the work, all the work with our our economic recovery and the focus on downtown is very, very much appreciated, so thank you. We'll now move then to item 12.2. This is our fiscal year 2021-22 first quarter finance report, and this is Doc. This was prepared by Mandy Kellogg, but I believe Dr. Mitz is going to be presenting.
That is correct. Thank you very much. And our city clerk will be sharing her screen with us for the presentation. So this item tonight is an informational item. I'm just presenting the Q1, which is July, August, and September information for our water, our general fund, water fund, and wastewater fund. So if you want to go to the next slide, Cindy. We'll jump right into the general fund revenue summary. So this is as of Q1, but it is also important to note that we, it only includes information for our sales tax for July, but we do have an updated slide because we did receive our August sales tax information just, I believe it was last Friday that it came into us. And so you'll see for our Q1 revenues, year-to-date received is a little over $2 million. That equates for a total of 12% of the adopted budget. This is normal for historical collections for Q1. In particular, if you look at the property tax, property tax payments, we do receive them in later quarters. And so that's why that one is showing so low. This does include the excess EWRAP that we discussed at the 914 City Council Meeting, $443,000. The sales that was updated, the sales tax, that we literally just updated today. And we did get our August numbers, so including August, that added the total sales tax collected to date is $732,228, which does account for 15% of total sales tax. But again, that does not include September numbers, because we will not know those until the end of the end of November. So next slide, please. So this again is the updated numbers. So this is the same format that we followed last year when we were tracking it very, very closely for COVID. So you'll see sales tax, we have our July, the top line is our estimated. So that's what we're estimating to bring in in July, August, and September. And then underneath that, you'll see the actuals. So you do see for both July and August, the actual is lower than what we anticipated. And I did get some additional information from Avenue Analytics, who does do our sales tax projections that helps explain some of those numbers. Again, you'll also see for Measure D, again, what our estimated is versus our actual. So if you combine the two months of July and August, our estimated versus actual for both sales tax and our Measure D, which is our additional half-cent sales tax. It is about $210,000 short. So because of that, we are continuing to be very, very conservative and very cautious. However, I did have a little bit, a little bit more relief after talking to Avenue today. And then TOT, as you can see, it is outperforming what we anticipated. And so you'll see for both what our revised estimate is versus our actual. The really important number to look at there is your September numbers. So we estimated 361,000 would be collected in September. As of today, we had 365,000 that was collected. And also knowing that hotels do have through the 31st, which is Sunday, to actually submit their documentation. And so we will see a couple more trickling in there. So overall, we're we are positively trending for our TOT. For sales tax, what I want to just bring to to your attention and discuss a little bit. Historically, what we've done when we present sales tax information, it's done on a quarterly basis. Because of COVID, we started breaking it down into a monthly basis. And how we got the the estimated monthly was taking what we collected in 2019, so fiscal year 2019, we took the total amount collected. And we broke that down by how much we received per month to give us a monthly percent to that we anticipate that we would collect. So that's what we base this chart on that you're looking at. How it actually works, the money that we receive by the California Department of Fee and Tax Administration does not roll off your tongue as easily as the OE did, but we'll talk, we'll call the tax administration. What they do is they provide every month, they provide what their estimate is going to be for us. So the monthly amount that you see for July that we actually received is their estimated advance. So that's $192,000. For August, we have their monthly advance, which is $248,000. And then in September, you will see a true-up, and that will be based off of what was actually collected. Because what the tax administration does is they just true it up on a quarterly basis instead of doing monthly. So that is why we're seeing this a little bit lower. It also explains the anomaly that we had in June, where it was our highest sales tax ever that we've seen of over $500,000. And so what that was is when the tax administration gave us our advances in both April and May. What they were doing is they were being very conservative, looking at the COVID numbers. And they were also projecting that any type of fiscal recovery would not actually start in what they consider Q3, which is July, August, and September, which is our Q1, because we like to confuse all the quarters. So what they did is they anticipated in in our fiscal year Q1, which were which we just finished. They were anticipating that's when the bounce back was going to start coming for the economic recovery for sales tax. Instead, what had happened, it actually was more realized in the April, May, and June of 2021. So that is why you saw that big jump up to $500,000. So that explains that anomaly. And in addition, there was the, in fiscal year 20, the federal government, or sorry, the state government did give a reprieve where it gave a 90-day extension for anybody paying sales tax to actually, they basically gave them an extra 90 days to pay their sales tax. So that was also part of that June true-up, big bump up that we saw. So based on that information, and after talking to our sales tax consultant. The sales tax consultant does feel like we are on track for our sales tax for this fiscal year if we go with their most likely numbers. And we are going to continue to monitor this, and we will go ahead, you know, we will present this as after Q1 is finished, and we actually get our true-up for the September, which will include those July and August numbers. So I wanted to point that out, that while it looks not so great here, we did have more positive information from our sales tax consultant today. But we are going to remain fiscally conservative on this. And also probably, you know, try to make some limitations on spending that we do in areas that we that we actually do not need to spend money. So that, go on to the next slide, please. So again, this just talks a little bit about the sales tax historical, why we had a little bit of angst earlier today. So you'll see in July 2018, again, doing really, really well for sales tax, 313,000, but again, that was our advance. In 2019, our advance was 252,000. 2020, our advance was 274,000. Well, our new advance is only 192,000 for this month, so we had a little bit of concern. And the other thing I do want to provide some clarification on as well, after talking to Avenue, is the way that the CDTFA is doing their advances. Right before COVID hit, they changed their methodology for how they did their advances. So again, that's a new methodology for us. When they did the advances during COVID, it really did not give us a solid indication. So this is, it's again, it's a, it's a new thing that we're going through with CDC, CDs. Yep, the tax administration, we'll go with that. So again, where you see that 192,000 and then the 248,000. It is also reflective of them using COVID numbers and the new methodology. So again, something that we definitely want to keep a close eye on, and then we'll report back after we get our first quarter true-up, which should be at the end of November. So the next slide. So this will give you an overview of your expenditures for the general fund. So this does include all transactions posted through 9/30/2021, which is at $4.4 million. The expenses are at 32% of the overall budget, and this is slightly higher due to the early strike teams that we had this year. And non-departmental, you'll see that spending is more than that, more than the 50%, but that also has to do with the timing of the proposed unfunded liability payment, as well as our additional discretionary payment. And that the city council is authorized to pay everything off in a 15-year clip. So if we go to the next slide. This is our overall fund, general fund net position, the estimated. This does have some adjustments from what was presented to City Council in prior meetings. Now that we know we have our purchase over, purchase order rollovers for fiscal year 21. What that is, is that is money that we expected to spend in fiscal year 21. We did not spend it by June 30, and so what we do is we roll over that purchase order. And to so those funds can be spent during the following fiscal year. What we did to accommodate for this is the beginning fund balance for the unassigned general fund balance. That has been increased by $300,000 because we did not spend it last fiscal year. So yet, so there, so it is essentially in your beginning fund balance. We have our estimated revenues at 16.478 million, so we have not adjusted those. That is based off of the number that was presented to City Council on September 14th at the City Council meeting. Our estimated expenses of $16.8 million. This does include what council authorized tonight for the for the fire department for for the fire department, for increasing staffing at the fire department. Um, we have our purchase order rollovers of $307,000. It does include use of reserves of $685,000. Um, and some of this is also for your one-time expenditures that were authorized also at the 914 meeting. So it does get, give us an estimated unassigned net position of 6.2 million, which is 37%, which is above the city council goal of a 30% reserve. So next slide. We'll be moving on to the water fund. So, um, right now, revenues are at 4.2, uh, 4.2 million dollars for the water fund. This is 68% of our estimated total, and this is higher than anticipated. Um, but it is definitely due to the penalties. Um, so that does include 3.1 million dollars in penalties. It is important to remember for both the water side and the wastewater side, how revenues are recognized in both of these funds. It is, revenues are recognized at the time that they are billed. And so it does not necessarily mean the time that we actually collect the money. And so we've been seeing that over and over in each of our quarterly reports, where we talk about our ongoing aging for the report, for both of these funds. Um, so I did want to point that out, that part of the 4.2 million dollars is about 3.1 million dollars in penalties. Um, and right now, the, um, let's see, the expenses, my apologies. The expenses for the water fund are at 1.7 million dollars, um, are at 29%, and they are on, they are on target as well. So if you want to go to the next slide. So here's a summary of your overall water fund expenses, Q1. Again, that non-departmental, um, you'll see the higher amount there, and that does have to do with the timing of the PERS unfunded liability payment. And all of the other departments are within, um, on track right now for spending. We go to the next slide. So the next slide here, what we did is we, uh, again, the same with the general fund. You'll see your estimated water fund balance as of 630, 2021 is at 5.4 million dollars. Uh, we did back out any funds that weren't spent during the prior year that is now captured under the rollover. So we have the 5.4 million dollars, our estimated revenues are 6.2 million dollars, and that does not include the water penalties. Our estimated expenses is 7 million dollars. The purchase order rollovers are 331,000 dollars, so that, uh, the user reserves was 1.2 million dollars. So that does include the purchase order rollovers, as well as some additional funding and expenses that were approved by city council for the additional staff, staffing that we've had to take on, um, due to the water emergency, as well as our water, um, op- operators for both our water, water plant and our wastewater plant, um, while we're currently going through recruitment. So this does leave an estimated net, um, fund balance of 4.2 million dollars or 60%. And again, it does not include any penalties that were collected, which, uh, we will be bringing forth at a later council meeting for some policy determinations on how to, uh, expend some of those penalty funds. And go on to the next slide. So we're heading into the wastewater fund. Next slide, please. So again, right now, our revenue is 586,000, or, um, which is 17% of build, which is lower than anticipated. Um, and we did expect this, um, you know, when we did our projections for this year. However, it is definitely lower than, than even what we anticipated when we formulated our budget. Um, the categories specifically that were lower are the general commercial, the restaurants, the motels uh, with no food service and industrial. And this is because there is a direct correlation between the wastewater, um, wastewater funds collected for the wastewater use. Unlike residential customers, residential customers, their winter average, or their wastewater use is based on winter average. So we look at the winter average for the water side, and that's where we get the wastewater consumption for, for residential customers. For non-residential customers, it's a one-to-one ratio. For every one unit of water that's used, they're billed one unit of wastewater. So as we're seeing the conservation measures taking place, um, as the, both residential and the non-residential customers are conserving water, we're going to see a larger hit to the wastewater fund because it's a one-to-one billing ratio. So it is something that, uh, we did assume, but we are going to keep a close eye on this because it is lower than anticipated. Um, our expenses are at 654,000 dollars. They are at 22%, which is on target as well. And again, a, one of the other future policy considerations, um, that we will bring forth on a later item is utilization of water penalties. Um, you know, taking some of that to offset loss revenues for water and potentially bolster the wastewater system as well. Next slide. Um, again, this is another breakdown of the wastewater fund for the expenses for Q1. Again, you'll see everything is, is in line for all the different, um, the different categories. And non-departmental is a little higher, again, attributed to the PERS unfunded liability. And the next slide, please. So this is an over, overall summary of the wastewater fund balance estimated. So again, in the beginning fund balance, almost 4.2 million dollars. Estimated revenues, 3.3 million. Estimated expenses, um, taking into consideration, uh, the transfers out to capital as well as the purchase order rollover. And you'll see the use of reserves is just tied to the PO rollover amount. Estimated net position, 4.1 million or 137%. And again, part of the 137% or that 4.1 million dollars is the one-time revenue that we received as a result of the settlement um, for the wastewater rates. And that is going to be, that is scheduled to be transferred over into the wastewater CIP to be able to help support the cost of the wastewater treatment plant. Next slide. So here is the updated water wastewater aging analysis. And again, we're doing a comparison for three years back, so we can see what some of the, um, see where the aging is looking. Um, we do suspect that a lot of the aging, because, um, being in the, the COVID emergency right now, uh, we do have a moratorium where we cannot shut off water due to, um, due to non-payment. And so you'll see, um, there is an increased aging, especially in that 60 to 90-day rate, yeah, 60 to 90-day. That has to do with the timing of the bills that have currently, the, the most recent bills that went out, that you can see the 90 to 120-day and over 120-day is, um, higher than it has been in previous years. Next slide. This is a summary of your cares and your leak adjustments. So the cares program is a low-income subsidy program. So currently, we do have 111 participants. The subsidy is from July 1st to September 30th, is $15,000. And we have had two additional participants since last quarter. And this amount has been included in the fiscal '22 adopted budget. Leak adjustments, um, we have had four leak adjustments. So the subsidy from July 1st to September 30th is $1,963. Two leaks for related irrigation and two leaks related to broken pipes. This dollar amount does not include any penalties that have been raised, um, by the water advisory board. And it also doesn't include anything else that's in our queue that has not been processed yet, because we do have some substantial amounts that, um, that are asked to be, um, entered into process. And with that, that concludes my report, and it's a receive and file, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank, thank you, Dr. Mits. That was excellent, and I really appreciate the clarification on the sales tax. Uh, that was very helpful. Um, I'll put it out to the council now if there are comments or questions. I am seeing none. I'll bring it, uh, back to the city clerk, and we'll look for, uh, public comment.
There is no public comment.
Okay, very good. We'll bring it back to the council. Uh, once again, look for any final comments on this item. Uh, it's a receive and file. So, uh, I'm seeing Councilmember Hall.
Thank you. Just some, uh, clarifying questions, please. April, we, we pay, uh, an overweighted, um, proportion of our PERS payments in Q1. And do we always do that? And if so, uh, why doesn't the budget reflect that?
The person we pay in Q1 is directly related to the unfunded liabilities. Uh, what happens is if we make the, we have to make the discretionary payment, so that's the additional discretionary payment, we do that in Q1. And then our regular PERS unfunded liability payment, we do that in, in, in Q1 as well. Because if we did it over the year and we paid it on a month-by-month basis, we actually pay a higher dollar amount. Um, and I don't know what that number is offhand, but we do pay, I want to say it was, it was closer to the 30 or 40,000 dollars more if we, if we basically paid it over the year. So because we have substantial, we have enough cash flow, we have always paid it in Q1.
Uh, and, but our policy is to show that we're paying it monthly over the course of the year, a, a flatline number. In our budget, in other words.
The current adopted budget is, is an annual budget, so it breaks out the total dollar amount annually that we're gonna spend. And so when we do our quarterly reports and even the monthly reports for our staff members, we show on there what the percentage is that has been spent versus the percentage available. So because we make those two large payments at the front end of the year, it automatically will show that we've used up a higher percentage.
Got it. Thank you. And one last question, the, uh, the outstanding balances. Uh, obviously, we can't turn off water, we don't want to. Um, how do we go about collecting this? It, it's almost, uh, 1.8 million dollars, it's close to 30% of total revenues, right?
Yes. In, in a typical, in a typical situation, our mechanism to be able to collect is to shut off water. So you shut off the water, and then they have to pay before you turn the water back on. That's what our typical collection mechanism is. Um, if a customer has moved out of their house, and we have an outstanding balance on their account that we have been unable to collect, we do actually work with a collection agency in order to collect the funds. But as of right now, we do not have a current collection, a collection mechanism. Um, what the, what customers do is they do get their bi-monthly bill, which will show them the total balance due. And then last month, we did send out just a friendly reminder of the balance due. And we also do offer up payment plans to those customers that are experiencing a hardship.
Okay. Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you. And I think that that was a, uh, excellent observation, and if there are ways that we can be proactive in a, in a, um, in, in an appropriate manner in terms of collection. Uh, we know that, uh, certainly with, with COVID and the, the reasoning for why we, we let, uh, uh, things, uh, move the way they did, but I do think it's a good observation in terms of the amount outstanding. Um, so, i- is there any additional council comment here? And am I seeing the city clerk? No, I think she was just moving a hand. Um, so with that, I'm gonna close that item. And then I have one more comment before we adjourn the meeting. And it has to do with, we are gonna be facing a very challenging traffic situation as a community here over the coming weeks. And we've demonstrated as a community the ability to work together through absolutely remarkable situations over the last few years. This is gonna be a challenge. Uh, it's gonna take patience, it's gonna take cooperation, it's gonna take communication, it's gonna take caution. So if we can all stay focused on working together, uh, and as more information comes out, as we work with the county, et cetera, uh, we'll be able to help our, uh, community understand where we are with this. But as we do so, so many of our, uh, urgent or emergency situations, this is gonna take a focus and a, uh, and a, and a commitment to working together as a community through this. So I just want to put it out there and, and thank staff, thank the council, and thank the community for facing, you know, one challenge after another, but doing so, uh, in a, in a manner that we know we can work together through. So if there are no, uh, additional comments here before we check out for the evening, I'll say thank you to everybody, and we'll see you at the next, uh, at the next meeting. Good night.
Night.